Time is seven oh one. I'll call to order the City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for February twenty six, twenty twenty five. Attendances by Zoom or in person at City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. You can call in at one six four six five five eight eighty six fifty six. Meeting ID seven ninety five dash nine fifty dash seventy thirty five, pass code nine zero seven one four eight. Moving on to agenda item number two, attendance serving on the commission this evening Diane Carroll, Jim Babinski, Donovan Riley, Donna Greco, remotely Tom Tullman, and Starlee Arias, myself Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Leifert. Moving on to agenda item number three, minutes for approval, A, February twelfth, twenty twenty five, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you Donna, do I have a second?
I abstain.
I'm sorry. Uh, you know what? We're gonna have a full, Diane was a alternate that night.
Uh, where are we on? Oh, yeah, so the same people have to be seated, that's fine. Just to continue, oh wait, what are we on, minutes?
Minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I got a motion, but the second is...
One, two, three, four, we gotta...
I think she was seated that night.
Who was?
Pardon?
Was.
You were?
I was.
Yeah.
Diane.
That was me assuming, but I was seated.
Yeah, you want a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those so moved?
I abstain, Tom.
Thank you, Thomas. Uh, time is seven oh three, moving on to agenda item number four, public hearings, A, re-subdivision, location fifty-three McDermott Avenue, applicant Scott Olson, proposal two lot re-subdivision of a two point four one acre property in local business zone. This is going to be continued, the, uh, applicant's still working on some unfinished business for this.
They have to, uh, just, uh, for the record, they have to still go to con- the Conservation Commission because they're working on a combination of easements and, um, and fee and lieu for, for conservation, so they, they have to, uh, provide, um, some information for, to get on the conservation's agenda.
Thank you. Time is seven oh four, moving on to agenda item number four, B, proposed zoning regulation amendment, applicant Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission, proposal amend section five point twelve, non-conforming uses in section six point four excavations. Serving on the commission this evening is Diane Carroll, Jim Babinski, Donovan Riley, Donna Greco, Tom Tullman, Starlee Arias, myself Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Leifert. Commissioner Greco, do you have a legal notice, please?
Probably gonna be the last thing in the back. I don't think so. Yeah, the, the newspaper notice. Um, yeah, if you could.
Take a two-minute recess? We'll get that.
Uh, yeah, let me just double check and make sure, no, yeah, it's not in here. Chill, chill, chill.
All right, we're gonna take a quick break here until...
Am I seated tonight?
That's presented. I'm sorry.
Am I seated tonight?
No.
What's up? We have to seat one person because Greg's not here.
Okay. You're seated.
Okay.
Thank you. For the record, Diane Carroll's seated this evening.
I better check the other one while we're at it. Yep, there's the other one.
The other one's on.
Yeah. He's gonna do it.
Yeah. Oops, I hope they were run at the same time, we'll see.
Well, I went there always when I... Not to go there.
So this one's, this is for the other one, that one's, that one's here.
General. Go to Avon for your exam, then you have a double B and C, then you go back the next day to Ava. And open.
This one's definitely gonna... Just make sure.
No, I don't need that, just like, you know, the building needs, you know, initially a worse, that kind of thing. Things I was wrong handling, legal, usually be right. Oh, some insurance will pay for it, I guess, oh, even though medical, I'm like, yeah, I don't have this one. Yeah. No, no, I just wanted to...
There we go, Donna. It was clipped to another, yeah, it was clipped to another page.
Good?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission, legal notice, the Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following application on Wednesday, February twenty six, twenty twenty five, in the City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. One, proposed Torrington zoning regulation amendment, applicant Planning and Zoning Commission, proposal amend section five point one two, non-conforming uses in section six A excavations. Time of hearing, seven PM.
Thank you, Donna. Is the applicant in attendance?
That'd be me. Well, uh, I could, oh, let me just let this person in. So I could just kick it off by reading, I'm reading the memo.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you, Jeremy.
Got it. It was clipped to something else, thank you. Um, all right, in review of Public Act eighteen dash one thirty-two, passed by the Connecticut General Assembly in twenty eighteen, I have identified a need to amend the zoning regulations for non-conforming uses in section five point twelve, and regulations specific to legal pre-existing non-conforming excavation operations in section six point four. These statutory changes state that the commission may not require a special exception for any use deemed legal pre-existing non-conforming. In the case of applications under a claim of pre-existing use, the burden rests with the applicant to provide information to staff and the commission for the history of a specific property. Also, per the outcome of Connecticut appellate court, of the Connecticut appellate court in the case McKenzie et al. versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Monroe, the commission has limited discretion to waive portions of the regulations for special exceptions in site plan approvals, as has been regular practice in certain aspects of quarry excavation operations in the past. Bulk regulations such as setbacks must be uniformly applied regardless of the type of application or specific site conditions. Any bulk regulation reductions, such as excavation setbacks and operation area, must be applied to a set of measurable standards. For example, this amendment proposal would allow, by special exception under a set of defined review standards, a reduction of excavation setbacks to no less than the, the standard building setback in the zone where the excavation is located. Any further relief from setback or other bulk regulations must be gained through the variance process through the Zoning Board of Appeals under the zoning hardship standard. I believe this and other proposed amendment language satisfi- satisfies the McKenzie case standard. Further corrective actions may be taken by the state legislature in future bills to address issues from the court case, but have not been addressed to date. Finally, regulatory changes under Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine removed the ability for planning and zoning commissions to use neighborhood character as a review standard or reason for approval or denial of an application or permit. I have proposed to remove language on character in these sections. Below is a summary of the regulation amendments that are proposed to the non-conforming use standards in section five point twelve, and the excavation regulations in section six point four. I am proposing amendments to the zoning regulations as follows. One, revision to section five point twelve point one, special exceptions not required for the continuance of any use deemed legal non-conforming, see Public Act eighteen, eighteen dash one thirty-two. Two, revision to section five point twelve point five, continued legal non-conforming use of land does not exempt requirements for periodic site plan approvals or other administrative permits such as wetlands or floodplain. Three, revision to section six point four point two, establishing excavation setbacks for requests for waiver of regulations, and establishes clear setback requirements from property lines, wetlands, watercourses, and floodplain soils. Four, revision to section six point four point four, to clarify conditions for maximum slope waivers and add fencing requirements. Five, revisions to section six point four point five, to clarify conditions for the increase of the five acre maximum excavation area, and tie any increase to the size of the property to provide a measurable standard. Six, revisions to section six point four point seven point A, to remove references to character of the neighborhood and replace with public health and safety, see Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine. I have included the related public acts and appellate court summaries in the record for the public hearing, and attached the proposed regulation amendment markups. Other staff comments, Northwest Hills Council of Governments, in a letter received from Robert Phillips, Executive Director of NHCOG dated February first, twenty twenty-five, the following comments were submitted. NHCOG staff have reviewed the proposed text amendment, text modifications, and find no apparent conflicts with regional plans and policies or adjacent NHCOG towns. Economic Development, William Wallach, Economic Development Director, completed his review on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and commented in support of the proposed amendment. Assistant Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, provided the following comments. In the proposed regulation amendments to section six point four excavation, I suggest the following revisions. A requirement that all trees used to restore a site, section six point four point five restoration, consists of native, of species native to the United States. This is consistent with the landscaping section of the zoning regulations, section five eleven, five point eleven revised twenty twenty-four. A modification of the minimum caliber trees used to restore the site from two point five inches to one point five inches, see attached article, influence of tree size on transplant establishment and growth, Watson, two thousand and five, which describes the positive impacts of planting smaller caliber trees. When planted, smaller trees will generally develop root systems faster and develop aboveground biomass more quickly than larger trees. I recommend adoption of all text amendments, including those above proposed to section six point four excavations. No additional comments were received from other city departments. The proposed amendments are generally supported by the City Plan of Conservation and Development, with reasonable zoning controls on the location and operations of excavation and processing projects. Section four, Natural Resources, encourages protections for stormwater, for water quality and stormwater control, as well as steep slope protection and protection of threatened and endangered species. Section five, Open Space and Greenways, encourages development away from scenic vistas and ridge lines. Section six, Community Character, also encourages the preservation of scenic areas and historic resources. Section eight, Business Development, encourages recruitment of new industry and retention of small businesses. Section eleven, Utilities, provides a goal of improved stormwater management and review of any new connections to the city's storm sewer system. In consideration of the above, I recommend the approval of these proposed regulation amendments to section five point twelve, non-conforming uses, and section six point four excavations of the zoning regulations as presented.
Thank you, Jeremy. And for the record, there was mailings, uh, taken care of.
Yes, so we have records of the mailing, we have, we're required to do mailings to all the adjacent towns, which we did, and, um, there's a record of the response from the NH, uh, Northwest Hills COG.
Perfect, thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions or comments?
No.
Anybody on Zoom, Starlee or Tom?
Oh, good.
Alrighty, I'll go to the public, would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, that includes anyone on Zoom. Being none, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, that includes anyone on Zoom. All right, being none, the time is seven sixteen, I declare this public hearing closed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve proposed zoning regulation amendment, applicant Planning and Zoning Commission, proposal zoning regulation amendment, one, revision to section five point one, two point one, special exceptions not required for continuance of any use deemed legal non-conforming, see Public Act, Public Act eighteen dash one thirty-two. Two, revision to section five point twelve point five, continued legal non-conforming use of land does not exempt requirements for periodic site plan approvals or other administrative permits such as wetlands or floodplain. Three, revision to section six point four point two, establishing excavation setbacks for requests for waiver of regulations, and establishes clear setback requirements from property lines, wetlands, watercourses, and floodplain soils. Four, revisions to section six point four point four, to clarify conditions for maximum slope waivers and add fencing requirements. Five, revision to section six point four point five, to clarify conditions for increase of the five acre maximum excavation area and tie any increase to the size of the property to provide a measurable standard. Six, revision to section six point four point seven point A, to remove references to character of the neighborhood and replace with public health and safety, see Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine. The effective date of the regulation change amendment shall be the day after publication of the legal notice of decision in the local newspaper.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Time is seven eighteen, moving on to agenda item number four, C, proposed zoning regulation amendment, applicant Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission, proposal amend section six point five point four, multi-family housing conversion. Serving on the commission this evening is Diane Carroll, Jim Babinski, Donovan Riley, Donna Greco, Tom Tullman, Starlee Arias, myself Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Leifert. Commissioner Greco, do you have a legal notice, please?
I do not. City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission, legal notice, the Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following application on Wednesday, February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, in the City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. One, proposed Torrington zoning regulation amendment, application, applicant Planning and Zoning Commission, proposal amend section six point five four, multi-family housing conversion. Time of hearing, seven fifteen PM.
Thank you, Donna. You wanna dive right into your memo again, Jeremy?
Sure.
Please.
All right, um, to comply with statutory changes in Public Act twenty-four dash one forty-three, section three, passed by the Connecticut General Assembly in twenty twenty-four, the Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission has identified a need to modify the zoning regulations for future proposed conversions to nursing homes and congregate care facilities to multi-family housing. Currently, any conversion or new construction for multi-family dwellings requires a special exception. This modification would provide for a narrow allowance for a site plan approval for use conversions for nursing homes or congregate care facilities that have been vacant for a minimum of ninety days, to change the use to multi-family residential. I have included the statutory language of PA twenty-four dash one forty-three in the file record for the public hearing, and propose a regulation amendment as follows. One, add new section six point five point four for conversion to multi-family housing by site plan approval from nursery homes or congregate care facilities that have been vacant for at least ninety days, provided that, one, multi-family dwellings are allowed, are in allowed use in the zone, and comply with the regulations for setback, unit density, et cetera, in section six point eight, and two, the building may not be expanded or modified by more than ten percent of the current footprint. The draft language for the proposed section, it, to be revised, is attached, as well as the state statute revision language under PA twenty-four dash one forty-three. Other staff comments, Northwest Hills Council of Government, Governments, Robert Phillips, Executive Director of NHCOG, submitted the following comments dated February first, twenty twenty-five. NHCOG staff have reviewed the proposed text modifications and find no apparent conflicts with regional plans or policies or adjac- or adjacent NHCOG towns. No additional comments were received from other city departments. As this regulation amendment is proposed to comply with changes to state statute, analysis of the compliance with city's P O C D is not necessary. However, the proposed amendments are generally supported by the City Plan of Conservation and Development. The amendments are consist, are consistent with the goals and recommendations of section, I suppose to say four, Natural Resources, and section five, Open Space and Greenways, by helping to relieve development pressure in, in utilizing existing buildings rather than new construction. The proposal also furthers the goals of section nine, housing, in providing additional market rate and affordable housing opportunities for residents, and also improving workforce housing stock and opportunities for existing buil- building rehabilitation. In consideration of the above, I recommend approval of this proposed regulation amendment to add a new section six point five point four of the zoning regulations as presented.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do any commissioners have any comments or questions?
I have a quick one, Jeremy. Um, when the, uh, the wording of the, the proposed, uh, addition states, uh, the building may not be expanded or modified by more than ten percent, by modified, do, do they mean they can't?
Does that, does that include shrinking it down, or tearing it down, or making it...
Yeah. Or? It, it does, it's, uh, it's specific like that in the statute.
Okay.
The only, I mean, you can modify it by more than ten percent, but that would just require a special exception.
Oh.
This is just, this is just what, how it would fall under a site plan.
Okay.
So when you say modify, is that the footprint?
My footprint of the building, yeah. Yep. Yeah, and it's, it's not, it's not just specific to expansion, so I had to say or modified?
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Anyone else?
Appreciate it.
Yeah. I'll go to the public, would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, that includes anyone on Zoom. Being none, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Being none, the time is seven twenty-three, I declare this public hearing closed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve proposed zoning regulation amendment, applicant Planning and Zoning Commission, proposal zoning regulation amendment, add new section six point five point four for conversion to multi-family housing by site plan approval from nursing home to congregate care facilities that have been vacant for at least ninety days, provided that, one, multi-family dwellings are in allowed use in the zone and comply with regulations for setbacks, unit density, et cetera, in section six point eight. Two, the building may not be expanded or modified by more than ten percent of the current footprint. The effective date of the regulation change slash amendment shall be the day after publication of the legal notice of decision in the local newspaper.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item number five, old business, uh, there is none on the, the, uh, agenda. We need to add, by a motion, for modification to site plan fourteen zero two, modification to athletic fields in addition of a detached restroom concession storage building being presented by Slam Collaborative. Do I have a motion for that?
I saw move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Is the applicant in attendance?
Yes, Kent Moorehart here from the Slam Collaborative.
All right, give us an overview of what you're looking to do, sir.
Sure, I'm gonna share my screen just to give you a quick overview. Uh, for those of you that are familiar with the, the new, uh, high and middle school being built currently, we have a plan to change the field, the athletic field components, so can everybody see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
So this is a composite image that, uh, is comprised of many part sheets in the submission that we made to you earlier today. Um, but this, this shows the current plan as previously approved, with baseball field on the southern portion of the field venue area, two opposing additional ball fields, and a rectangular field with another overlapping ball field. These were all planned to be natural grass. Uh, the project has received an additional grant to be able to upgrade these, these fields to synthetic turf. Um, by and large, this, the zone of athletic fields does not change, it just the design of those fields and placement of those fields changes, as well as the material. So, what's being proposed, you can see none of the drive aisles around the perimeter are changing in any way, uh, but we have a varsity softball field that's now at the southern point of the field venue area, a varsity baseball field with an overlapping rectangular multipurpose field in the outfield area, all of these will be synthetic turf. Uh, the six tennis courts will remain in the originally approved location, and those will be built as part of the project. Uh, one other thing to point out is that this softball field is planned for athletic lighting, all new this field. And then we also have a, we're calling an auxiliary building, that we want to place out here to bring two restrooms that are currently planned for this portion of the main school building, and a small, uh, prepackaged snack counter concession space that's planned for this side of this bump out. Those will be removed from the main building and placed in this auxiliary building. Um, I do have all of the drawings that we submitted earlier today, uh, on the screen if anybody wants to look at them, but there's twenty sheets, and so it's quite a bit. And also with me tonight, we have, uh, Will Walter from Banesh, who is the civil engineer, and Henry Withers, our landscape architect, if you have any questions for them. I can continue and provide additional information on the building if you prefer. Um, one thing I can show you, this is the floor plan of that small bump out area on the existing planned high school building, these two restrooms, and this concession space will come out, and the revised plan for that area is like this, the locker room will shift down, and an equipment storage, uh, space will be provided with an oversized door, and a person door to the, to the east. The two person doors that are current, that were planned for the south side will go away, and the person door with the counter, concession counter door that was planned for the north side will also go away, and those will be part of the auxiliary building. Jump to the auxiliary building. Uh, the building is planned to be thirty feet by eighty feet, with a small, uh, cutout from the corner of the plan. I'll zoom in on the plan. Uh, we have that small concession space with the sales counter here, those two outdoor bathroom, uh, excuse me, individual use restrooms, and then there's an outdoor equipment, athletic equipment storage space with an overhead, oversized door, and a person door to access into that. The plan for this building is, the, the exterior wall will be constructed of, uh, the same concrete masonry block unit that's planned for the main gym on the high school, and it is a, um, a hip roof that will be asphalt shingles. See if there's anything else I can explain to you, you can see here in this, in this view that, um, on the south side of the auxiliary building, it'll be slightly built into the grade. That is on this side. Uh, previously approved backstops for the, the, uh, originally designed fields will simply be relocated, previously designed, um, dugouts will be relocated to accommodate the new layout, and I believe that's about it. If there's anything that, um...
One more item.
...I may have missed, Henry?
Yeah, uh, Henry Withers, uh, landscape architect with Slam for the record, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, one minor thing, but Camp, you, you sort of alluded to it, you've got a line on there that shows the extent... You've got a line on there that shows the extent of an old retaining wall that we had. And with this new configuration, we were able to actually eliminate a portion of that wall. We think it's much nicer. We now have two means of egress that are accessible. There are no longer stairs going up on to the side that Kemp is pointing to currently. It's a ramp, and the other side is a walk that goes up through those traditional gates that have been there that are going to be restored. And so we think it's a better plan overall. It's got nice accessibility. It's going to be an open graded lawn area up to the slope to that baseball field and up to the concession building. The concession building likewise is graded and is placed in a way that allows a very nice flat grade in front of it that would allow patrons and visitors to just go and get something and gather outside the football field or the, you know, the ball games and just, you know, have a snack. So I think it works actually very well and is an improvement over what was originally proposed.
Will, do you want to give a brief on the drainage and the drainage memo that was provided as well?
Sure. Thanks, Kemp, for the record. Will Walter, professional engineer with Alfred Benesh and Company. Essentially, everything on the site drains east, which is at the top of the page, to west, which is down at the bottom of the page, and eventually makes its way to a very large swale that runs along the eastern edge of Route Eight in the condot right of way. There's three pipes that collect drainage from this site and from the surrounding sites that make its way down there, as well as the pond down in the south overflows and spills into that right of way. So we've updated our hydrologic model. A very high level explanation is that we're making sure that whatever was flowing through those pipes under existing conditions in terms of the peak flow has been maintained or reduced under this, the previously approved set of drawings. They had the synthetic turf fields. And now these proposed drawings, I'm sorry, the previously approved drawings had grass fields. These now have synthetic turf fields. Synthetic turf fields, inherently, they drain vertically and not horizontally, and underneath them is a ten inch stone reservoir. So you've got a lot of built-in stormwater management underneath these fields that holds the rain, holds the water, and infiltrates it to a certain extent, and then when it rains heavy, it overflows into a series of collection pipes and makes its way into those pipes. But we have submitted, updated, well, we provided an addendum to the stormwater management report along with our plans, and that was submitted to the city engineer today. And Kemp, I'm not sure you mentioned, but what we're seeking tonight is a conditional approval, obviously based upon the engineer's review and approval of the drainage report. And of course, if he has any modifications he'd like to see done, we'll be more than happy to make those revisions to piping and whatnot.
So what you're saying is basically with the drainage that's underneath this artificial turf, the drainage is pretty much almost better?
Yes.
Natural grass?
Yep.
Okay. Just a quick question on the building itself. Obviously, it's being moved away from the other building. So as far as water and sanitary conditions, is there any pump chamber or anything, or you're hitting it by gravity back to the existing building? Or is there going to be any outcropping of another pump chamber or anything there?
No, it's, it will be.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, there's no pump chamber. You can see, in fact, in fact, Kemp, if I might share my screen, I've got something that's a little bit clearer.
Sure.
Let's see.
Should be down at the bottom, Will.
Yep. Everybody, let me know when you can see my screen.
Yeah, we can see it there.
Got it.
Okay, so essentially, the green is an existing deep, large sanitary pipe that runs in an easement. It's a city pipe that runs through like this and comes down and goes out underneath Route Eight. There's a manhole right there, and so we're going to come out of the building back to this sanitary manhole. This line is very deep. We're going to come out and then do a drop either exterior or interior and come down. We'll work with the W P C A, obviously.
Okay.
But we don't need any pump station for this.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, the water supply will be from the main building.
Right.
Correct.
All righty. You have anything else to add at this point?
Yeah, that concludes the presentation.
All right, Jeremy, you got a memo?
Kent Morehart, principal at the Slam Collaborative, Inc., has submitted a request to modify site plan number fourteen oh two that was approved on May eleven, twenty twenty-two for demolition of existing Torrington High School and construction of a new high school, middle school, and central administration department and associated site work. This request seeks to modify the previously approved layout of the athletic fields and to construct a proposed standalone building consisting of two bathrooms, concession stand, and storage space. It is also proposed that the athletic fields be changed from natural grass to synthetic turf. Other modifications are proposed to accommodate the new athletic field layout, including sidewalk redesign, lighting layout, backstop and dugout relocation, and the javelin throw area. Further description on the proposed changes is contained in a letter from the applicant dated February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, and made part of the record for this request. Plans submitted are titled Phase Two of Three, Site and Building Construction and Abatement, and Demolition of Existing Building, Torrington Public Schools, Major Bessie Drive, Torrington, Connecticut, by the Slam Collaborative, Glastonbury, Connecticut, revised to February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, twenty sheets. Also submitted is a revised stormwater plan titled Stormwater Management Memorandum, Amendment to the Stormwater Management for Torrington High School, Middle School for synthetic athletic fields, fifty Major Bessie Drive, Torrington, Connecticut, by Benesh, Glastonbury, Connecticut, dated February twenty twenty-five. Staff has met previously with the Board of Education Representatives and their design and engineering consultants to discuss these modifications prior to this meeting. In reviewing the plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. One, in general, the changes are for the configuration and materials for the athletic fields only. The general footprint of the athletic field area on the property is not proposed to be changed. Two, the proposed layout changes and modification from natural grass to synthetic turf field will require review from the city engineer. I recommend that any approval be conditioned on a favorable review of the revised stormwater report submitted. Three, no changes are proposed outside of the athletic field area or to any other areas of the project. Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments on February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. The proposed footprint of disturbance in the upland review area is unchanged from valid wetlands permit number W C twenty-two oh two oh one. Therefore, this modification will be processed administratively as a minor modification to the existing permit. This constitutes a favorable report from the Inland Wetlands Commission. Paul Conzins, city engineer, has reviewed the documents and has conditionally approved the changes, pending final review of stormwater modifications and report. Conclusion, I recommend that the commission approve modifications to site plan number fourteen oh two for changes to athletic field orientation, installation of synthetic turf fields, and construction of a building approximately eighty by, let's make that thirty, I put the wrong thing down, eighty by thirty, for restrooms, concessions, and equipment storage with the following conditions. One, all terms and conditions of the previous site plan approval number fourteen oh two and subsequent modifications shall remain in effect for this approval unless otherwise stated in this motion. Two, the applicant shall receive positive stormwater modification review from the city engineer prior to approval of modifications of administrative zoning and grading permits for construction. Three, two copies of the final stamped modified plan sheet shall be provided to the city planner prior to modification of zoning and grading permits for construction. Four, updated modified grading and zoning permits shall be issued for the new building and modified site layout prior to commencing site work in these areas.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do any commissioners have any comments or questions?
Good.
The applicant all set?
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve modifications of site plan fourteen zero two by applicant Kent Morehart, Slam Collaborative, at fifty Major Bessie Drive for changes to athletic field orientation, installation of synthetic turf fields, and construction of a building approximately eighty by thirty feet for restrooms, concessions, and equipment storage with the following conditions. One, all terms and conditions of previous site plan approvals number fourteen oh two and subsequent modifications shall remain in effect for this approval unless otherwise stated in this motion. Two, the applicant shall receive final positive stormwater modification review from the city engineer prior to approval of modifications of administrative zoning and grading permits for construction. Three, two copies of the final stamped modified plan sheet shall be provided to the city planner prior to modifications of zoning and grading permits for construction. Four, updated slash modified grading and zoning permits shall be issued for the new building and modified site layout prior to commencing site work in these areas.
The motion, I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, so moved. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Night. Moving on to the agenda, item number six, new business. A, Valley Pandiala, D, Segregate, Connecticut Legislative Update, Work, Live, Ride Bill Proposal. Is the applicant in attendance?
So that's Nick, right? Your audio is not coming through right.
Can you hear me now?
Try it again.
Hello?
It's small.
It's small. About that. Can you guys hear me better now?
No.
We can hear you. It's just really, it's kind of screechy.
Oh, I don't want that.
No.
Oh, no. Sorry about that. Is it any better or not so much?
Yeah, I don't know. There's something giving you feedback on your end.
Hmm. Let me try one more thing. I don't want to waste your time if you. But. Is this any better?
No.
My normal setup. Oh, geez. Okay. If you're saying you can't hear me, then.
That might be a little better. Might be a little better.
Is that better? Okay. Sorry about that. Let me know if it gets worse again.
I think we can work with that.
Okay. Sorry about that. Nick Kanter, I'm going to share, I'm the new director for Desegregate, Connecticut. Also a zoning commissioner in Norwalk, so I really appreciate the time tonight. I'll try to be as brief as possible. What we're doing is going around the state, giving updates to planning and zoning commissions on work, live, ride, giving background and answering questions that folks may have. So a little bit about Desegregate C T. We're a pro homes coalition of neighbors and nonprofits. We believe that better land use laws will make Connecticut more prosperous, equitable, and sustainable. We believe in all of the above approach. You know, really to deal with the housing shortage that's out there and the climate crisis, we believe that we need to build more kinds of homes, act at all levels of government, you know, at the municipality level, at the state level, at the federal level, and connect all related issues. Some additional background, Desegregate C T is a program of the Regional Plan Association, which is a planning and research advocacy group focusing on New York, Connecticut, and New Jersey. And they create these regional plans every generation. And the last one in twenty seventeen really focused on transportation, housing, affordability, sustainability, and a lot of the things we're trying to achieve with work, live, ride this year. So what is work, live, ride? Also, H B sixty-eight thirty-one is the bill that we're advocating for this year up at Hartford. It's a state-level proposal that incentivizes local communities and also organizes state agencies to create more transit-oriented communities. The goal here is to create a post-sprawl future to focus responsible growth around the parts of our communities that makes the most sense. And we're really focusing on transit-oriented communities. You may have heard of transit-oriented development before, but we want to take a broader approach than that, not thinking of development by development, site by site, but a whole area within a municipality. And we really think that's part of New England's character. We really have had a transit-rich history, and it's really important that we get back to that to deal with the housing shortage where it makes the most sense in the climate crisis. And so if we break apart the bill, the three aspects, the three benefits that we see with this in work, live, ride is first, the work part, which is accessible jobs. We see this as creating jobs, increasing access to jobs, generating foot traffic in downtowns, really bringing economic activity into municipalities and into Connecticut. We often hear from a lot of businesses saying we want to grow, but we can't because our employees don't have places to live or don't have any places to live nearby. And that leads us to the live part of this and affordable homes. We really believe this legislation is going to move to create more variety of homes, rent and own, and also some of it's going to make construction a little more economical and lower the costs. And finally, the ride aspect is safer streets. Really want to create critical mass for public transportation, reduce the number of vehicles miles traveled. That's our highest carbon output as a state, and really stop the sprawl. We don't believe or want people building homes out where taking down forests to build instead of, you know, we really want to preserve the great stuff that we have in Connecticut, and we need the right legislation to do that. And continuing on public transit a little bit, it's a little more common than I think many people, than some people think in Connecticut. A hundred eleven towns have it. And the last source of ridership that came out yesterday is about thirty-three million people, thirty-three million annual rides for bus and rail. When we look at Torrington, we see where, you know, where you stack out. Obviously, you don't have a rail, but you do have some bus, so we see that as transit, a transit community at this point in time. And what that means is really clicking into work, live, ride, and how this works is there's three elements to it. First is the town and city. And really, the important thing there is, we have some more slides in a second, is to go into more detail, is you get to create your own district, you get to define it, and working with your own zones, your own, whatever rules you want to put into place that are some guidelines, but it's really meant to leave it in local control. And in doing so, in creating a transit-oriented district, you'd get prioritization for state funding and technical assistance to build necessary infrastructure. The other side of the equation here is the Office of Responsible Growth. This is part of the Office of Policy and Management. It's established twenty years under Governor Jody Rell as an executive order. And really, what this organization is going to be grown to do is, one, act as a liaison to help communities coordinate across the state, really act as that quarterback, dealing with all the different state agencies when you're trying to do something is complicated and annoying, and we're hoping that this office is going to do more of that. And then also help set guidelines and help with technical assistance. And then on the state agency side, it's a prioritization of funding and coming together more to sort of align around the state plan of conservation and development. So to continue with what municipalities get first control, again, it's opt-in, locally-driven process. You get to opt out to technical help. The Office of Responsible Growth helps you design the district if you want, but also includes funding for general planning guides and studies you may need, allowing for the local nuance, and then the priority funding for most of the state's discretionary funding involving infrastructure. Some examples of the fundings at play, there's revitalization grants, infrastructure and housing grants, and transit-oriented development grants. The overlay district guidelines, so there are going to be some guidelines that the Office of Responsible Growth sets out. First off, towns get to determine, you know, with the P and Z's and wetlands, which transit station they want to build around. Could be bus, could be rail. Districts must be reasonable size, must not have excessive requirements for parking lot size, F A R setbacks height. And to be clear, districts can still have requirements, but just not so much that it discourages development. So instead of parking at three spots per unit, it's one spot per unit or something of that nature. Sorry there, I took out my headphones. Additionally, there's going to be some as-of-right components, which are duplexes, triple-deckers, townhomes, cluster homes under nine units or nine homes. under, under nine, uh, units or nine homes, developments with ten homes or more with thirty percent affordable housing, and developments a hundred percent affordable housed and owned by housing authority, nonprofit, or religious entity. Again, still subject to whatever regulations you have within your zone, but would be as-of-right after the, the zone is, uh, approved. Um, a little bit more on how does it interact with your existing regs? All of the developments outside of what we just mentioned as as-of-right would still retain public hearing if you so want, if you so choose. The overlay does not remove your other zoning regulations around design, site elements obviously can be included, and inland wetlands still reviews all applications within the districts, uh, as it, you know, as your charter requires. A little history about work, live, ride is twenty twenty-three, we established the Office of Responsible Growth into state statutes and a s- a secured additional staff. Twenty twenty-four, work last year, we just passed the House with ninety votes and a bipartisan vote, didn't have time in the Senate. And this year, we feel like we have some really good momentum, we had our public hearing on the third and now awaiting a committee vote. One thing we included in here is just looking at Torrington, obviously y'all are going to know where you'd want to do something like this, uh, to make the most sense in your town, but just looking at it, just some idea, food for thought. Obviously, first and foremost, you could do nothing, then other areas could be around Main Street, Franklin Plaza where there's bus service today, and I saw the, the changes that you guys recently did in the Christmas Village area. Also, could be around South Main Street in Torrington Plaza where bus, bus service is today, or you could do both. The slide's mainly just there as a, a food for thought slide. And then, just to close really, where we are again, uh, we're, uh, awaiting committee vote and hoping that could happen as early as, uh, beginning of March, which would be really exciting to keep the ball rolling on this and continue the momentum. And with that, I ask if you're interested and want to stay up to date, sign up for our newsletter, and I'm happy to answer any questions folks may have.
Thank you, sir.
Right.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I just have a couple of quick ones, um, so incentive, incentive housing zones, how, how does this, uh, meld or tie in? If, you know, with existing, existing incentive housing zones?
Um, right now it's.
Very similar language, it sounds like.
Can you ask, so you're asking if you currently have an incentive housing zone, what would this, the relationship be with work, live, ride?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, in terms of language and how they might fit together, like if, um, you know, we have a, if we have a, um, incentive housing zone near sort of a, a busy bus stop, are, are we, are we meeting the criteria for, under, under this law, or, or we have to kind of, you know, dive a little deeper and take a, and take a look at our incentive housing?
You might have to dive a little deeper, the, we're leaving the legislation pretty open for the Office of Responsible Growth to make determinations on towns to be grandfathered in, so towns will be able to make their case of saying, look, we have this around here, we don't call it a TOD, but it effectively is a TOD, does that m- meet the muster? Um, I can't say anything for certain because it's going to be up to the secretary, but the goal is for towns that are already doing this, we want people to get the credit already and not feel like you have to redo, uh, your zoning.
Yeah. Um, and the, uh, the, the other question I kind of jotted down here is, have you, have you been in touch with the, um, the legislative liaisons from our planners group from CCAPA?
CCAPA, I feel like they've submitted testimony on this, I don't know off the top of my head, I'll take a look, CCAPA.
I, I would be happy to, uh, to give you the contacts for the two, we have, we have, uh, kind of co-chairs, you know, for our, for our group. Um, and they, they'd be great to reach out to for, for some advocacy.
Yeah.
I think they may have already submitted.
They might have submitted, if not, I'll, I'll check, if not, I'll reach out to, uh, Jeremy and if you get the info, unless Jeremy is talking right now, which I unfortunately can't see all, um.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, great, I'm happy to, to check in with them.
Yeah.
But the faces and names and.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, how, how, uh, one, one other quick one, how does this tie in with sustainable CT?
I. You mean the, the, the accreditation system?
Yeah, right, dude, have you, have you?
We haven't done an overlay on that, I mean, the thing that's really exciting this year is a lot of environmental groups are supporting and have written testimony and came out at the public hearing in favor of it because of the post-sprawl aspect. The way that I think it makes a lot of sense is for towns that may not have large transit yet and may not want it or do want it, that's up to them, but we don't want to encourage development to occur in the green spaces that towns want to preserve. Like, you know, we, you're probably seeing this in some of your parts of the neck of your woods of, you know, people taking over farms and building, subdividing that, and we really think that's not the best and best use of land. We really want to concentrate that, the home building around the transit.
Yep. Thank you.
Any commissioners have any comments or questions?
Nope.
I have, I have a, a quick, a quick one, is it, um?
I'm sorry, this is, uh, this is Donovan Riley, one of our, one of our commissioners.
Oh, awesome, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, uh, thanks for your time today.
No, thank you for having me.
Would the creation of, of, of a, a TOC, um, help out in, in, um, gaining access to some, maybe some state funds to, 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 uh, increase our public transportation system here in Torrington? Because, I mean, I, I, I think, um, I understand that the, the initiative sort of i- is housing with, and then once you'd have the housing, if the transportation system doesn't support the, the people you have in the house.
You know, it's a bit of a chicken and the egg problem.
Yeah, don't both things have to sort of grow equally and?
Yeah.
Be interesting, I think if you had the transportation first, maybe that attracts the housing and, and so.
Yeah, there's definitely a debate to be had around that, where we ended up with legislators is not directly including DOT funding in this round for work, live, ride, it just wasn't, wasn't where we were going with it to go out of planning and development. I think in a future iteration, that's definitely possible, um, but the way that we see it is laying the groundwork for Office of Responsible Growth to really help the state continue to prioritize, so there's going to be organs, uh, sorry, agencies on the Interior Agency Council that, you know, DOT is going to be a part of that, that ORG is going to be interacting with them to help streamline all of that as well, so the funding may not be there to start, but the agency's head should be on there as well, thinking about this and how to maximize it, is really the goal here because and I'm sure you guys have experienced, I know I've experienced down in Norwalk, is it takes different parts of the state to achieve your goals, and sometimes it gets really confusing of, wait, I'm doing this thing with DOH, I'm doing this thing with DOT, it's really the same thing, how do they come together? Why do I have separate grants? Oh, wait, these grants have different requirements, wait, it's the same thing, this, it's, you know, really frustrating. So, what we're hoping with this is, and it's more of a, has not been the focus of the legislation, but I think it's a really important part of it, is the Office of Responsible Growth continuing to grow and have, uh, some more authority and some more power to really build out the state's planning capacity. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much for your time this evening, sir.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it, be in touch.
This is Jer, this is Jeremy, again, I'll reach, I'll reach out to you with, uh, with some contacts at CCAPA, they definitely be worth reaching, you know, getting in contact with.
Yeah, I really appreciate it, thank you so much, everyone, have a great evening.
Thank you, you too, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda, item number six, B, Sam Ballone, Loadstar Energy Solar Project Presentation for West Hill Road. And for the record, Jim Babinski is going to recuse himself.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sam Ballone, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, they both work, so.
Um, so I'm Sam Ballone, I work at Loadstar Energy, um, we're a community solar developer, um, originally based out of Avon, Connecticut, we just moved our headquarters to West Hartford, though. Um, we're a small company, eighteen people, um, I'm a, the lead project developer in Connecticut, and I've been here for two and a half years. Um, so I'm here today to talk to you about our West Hill Road solar project that you have in front of you. Um, joining me remotely is also Mike Gagnon from SLR, who is our civil engineer on the project. Um, so I'm just going to give you a high-level summary about it, and then I'll pass it to Mike to, um, update on the engineering and the stormwater and drainage, um, and then I'll open it up for Q and A. Um, so this project, it's on, um, West Hill Road, it is forty-one acres total. Um, right now it's one lot, but originally it was, um, an eleven-lot subdivision. That subdivision expired a few years ago, so now on the record it is one forty-one acre lot owned by Jim Babinski. And Loadstar, um, is, has an option to purchase the property, so, um, once the project is approved, then we plan to purchase the property. Um, the solar array itself is three megawatts in size, and it, that's about nineteen point two acres of total disturbance, so that nineteen acres includes all of the panels, all of the stormwater features, the access roads, um, the utility poles, all of that. Um, we're connecting to Eversource's existing distribution system that is on West Hill Road, and we've already gone through extensive studies with Eversource that took, um, about a year, two year and a half long to, to do. And it's resulted in approval to interconnect, so Eversource has, uh, given us the go-ahead to connect to the grid, we know that there is capacity. Um, a little bit more about the timeline of this project before I dig into the site plan. Um, so since it is over two megawatts in size, it is under the jurisdiction of the Connecticut Siting Council. So we've been preparing for that to submit, and we plan to submit in just a couple weeks here, on March tenth. We'll be, um, submitting the full application package, and that will be made public, so anyone can go and access all of these files, the site plans, and there's a number of exhibits. Um, once we submit to the Siting Council, the Siting Council has six months to review the project. Um, uh, assuming everything goes to plan, and if it is approved, we would plan on starting construction next spring, so spring of twenty twenty-six. And then, um, construction takes about four months or so, so we would be operational ideally in the fall of twenty twenty-six. Um, now, going to the site plan which you see on the screen in front of you, uh, the top of the page is north, bottom is south. Um, the top of the page is West Hill Road, to the right of the page, which is to the east, that's the direction of the new Hartford, um, town line. Um, so then the, you can see the array there, and as I said, it encompasses about nineteen acres. We are going to put in a gravel access drive off of West Hill Road, about fifteen feet wide. Um, then that will extend down south, um, along the left side of the array. At the very end of that access road, there is an equipment pad which will have our transformers and inverters. Then we also have three stormwater basins, and we go through, um, our, our stormwater is permitted through Connecticut Deep. Um, they have very strict standards, and they require you to, um, not only maintain the drainage patterns on the site, but actually improve the drainage patterns and reduce peak flow. So, uh, Mike with SLR, um, has designed these three basins according to these rules, and we've submitted to Connecticut Deep, and they have actually given us kind of a preliminary approval depending on the project being approved by Siting Council. Um, and all of those, that drainage report and all of that will be made publicly available when we submit to the Siting Council. Um, a little bit more about the property, there are no wetlands in the development footprint area. The only wetland on the site is far to the, the southwest, um, so we steer very clear of that. Um, there's also a, a gas pipeline and an easement that bisects the property, so we make sure to stay out of that easement. Um, and that's why we're staying completely on the eastern portion of the site. Um, another thing to bring up, and, um, you know, a common question and concern I get with solar is the visibility aspect. So, if Christine, if you could switch over to the photo sim document, that would be great. Um, so we have some photo simulations here, on the top, this is the view from West Hill Road as it is now on the left side. On the right side, that's going to be the view after five years. Um, so you can't see the solar panels at all from the road, they're very set back and hidden. Um, you do see the five utility poles that we are required to put in. Um, two of those are owned by Eversource, and three of them are owned by Loadstar. And we are also going to add in screening on the left-hand side, um, to, to block the view from that house. Um, and then you see the detention basin on the right. Then scrolling down, this is the view from the nearest property line to the solar panels. Um, so actually, Christine, if you scroll to the top map, this gives it, it's a, yeah, up one more, here we go, then zoom in a little bit. Um, just want to show you the angle that this picture is taken from.
The, the, yeah, the zoom's always hidden underneath the, the sharing thing.
Alright, that's better. Um, okay, so the, the next set of images that you'll see is going to be, if you see that blue dot, not the one on West Hill Road, but the one, um, yes, right there where the mouse is, um, so that's the nearest property line to the closest panel. So, I'm going to go scroll back down to those images. Alright, so far left is what it currently is, you see the gassy easement and then trees, um, then scroll a little bit to the right. Um, so we're going to put in some planting, some, um, arboretum trees, so this will be the view after one year when the plants are still, uh, relatively new. Um, we're going to have an, it's an agricultural fence, and, um, we're going to put this kind of mesh screening on just the front side, so there's less visibility of the panels. Um, there's also a, a six-inch gap underneath the, um, fencing for wildlife to get through. And then you scroll to the right, this is what it will look like after five years, once the trees are, um, more grown. Um, so overall, I, I think that it's, it's pretty, it's very set back from the front of the road, pretty hidden, um, where we have screening. Um, so I think it's, I think it's a, a good use of the property, I know that solar is not everyone's desired outcome, but when you, you have to consider the other uses of the property, and originally this was, uh, uh, there was a proposal for an eleven-lot residential subdivision, and that also would have required tree, tree clearing, um, about twenty-three acres of tree clearing versus our plan, which is nineteen acres, so a little bit less. Um, and we're going to preserve the, um, the left side of the site plan, the western side, all twenty-something acres and change will be kept in PA four ninety, those won't be touched, um, as opposed to being converted to housing lots. Um, the other thing is under the subdivision, there is going to be a public road which would have required, you know, city resources to maintain. Under this plan, it's going to be a private road that we maintain, um, and we have very, very extensive stormwater controls. Um, and then lastly, I'll just touch on the benefit to Torrington, um, taxes. So, we are required to pay personal taxes and, um, real property taxes, um, and they're, they're pretty hefty for solar. Uh, we expect that with this facility, we'll be paying up to forty thousand dollars per year in taxes. So, that's the high-level summary, um, let me pass it to Mike Gagnon, who can just explain the, um, civil aspects a little bit more.
Thank you. Yeah, so, uh, if everybody can hear me good, I think, uh, Sam, you covered it pretty well. Um, you know, one of the things that, that we need to consider with these projects, and you covered it very well, is stormwater management, um, just to expand, expound upon what she said is that, um, we have to go through, uh, a bunch of test pits to ensure that subsurface conditions, um, are suitable for stormwater, and that's for looking for things like, um, you know, ledge, groundwater, uh, et cetera, because obviously, um, if we had encountered, um, some of those elements, um, we would not be able to put the basins, um, where, where they're currently located, as a matter of fact, um, we actually had to relocate the larger basin at the rear of the property uh, due to the presence of ledge um, when we initially conducted test pits. So um, we shifted, um, you know, we had to shift the basin over. Um, and so we were able to uh, accommodate that. Um, you know, other than that, um, you know, we're required to um, clear the site. Obviously, um, there will be uh, stringent uh, sedimentation erosion controls uh, employed um, during the project, during the construction of the project. Um, you know, we've in incorporated or included a comprehensive set of of notes um, in that regard in the plant set. Um, additionally, um, all of the uh, disturbed areas will be planted uh, with with a conservation um, seed mix um, so that you know, it's unlike a a typical turf mix. It only needs to be mowed, uh, you know, maybe once or twice a year. So um, other than that, that's that's pretty much uh, you know, a kind of a high overview of of the civil requirements associated with the project.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Um, so yeah, I would love to open it up to questions or comments, feedback.
A couple of questions, please. Uh. Is Eversource changing the poles out on West Hill?
No, no.
Not at all?
No, we're just connecting to the existing pole and then adding those five poles on the property.
And the rough distance from the road to the um, start of the the fencing area there?
Who that is, Mike, do you know what that rough distance is? You mean kind of where the the gate is to the panels?
Correct.
Like what, five hundred, six hundred feet, Mike?
So you're really not going to see it from the road at all?
Yeah.
Okay. If this moves forward, as far as the construction component goes, that access road that's being proposed and put in gravelled.
Mm-hmm.
Is that kind of one of the first steps to get that established? So all the tracking and so forth doesn't end up on West Hill in the process or?
Yeah, yeah, that'll be one of the first steps.
Let me just, uh, and and I know Greg asked because we had some problems with the with the with another.
Okay.
With another development.
Yeah, gotcha.
And then future uh, maintenance of the grounds, is there a protocol that's put in place, Sam?
Yeah, we have um, we submitted an extensive operations and maintenance plan. Um, but generally, once the site is operational, we do maintenance checks probably four times per year. We'll have people inspect the panels, the fence, um, just for any, you know, breakage or whatnot. And then we also have um, remote monitoring systems. So we can see if um, like a section of the array isn't working properly or the the transformer isn't working properly. And we can, we can see that remotely and send someone out ASAP. Um, and then we um, as Mike said, we mow about two to three times per year.
Uh, this is Mike Gagnon to answer your question about the distance. It's five hundred and fifty feet from the road to the fence line.
Thank you, Mr. Gagnon.
And um, Mike, did you, we, you had some further conversations with the with the city engineer too about the stormwater connection?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, he's reviewed the plan. As a matter of fact, uh, we had to make some adjustments. Uh, we actually got the um, your latest GIS information to verify the um, existing drainage infrastructure in the street. So um, yeah, and then he he has reviewed it and and is good with what we've proposed.
Okay.
Mike, was there any uh, reference back and forth with this project versus say eleven homes on site as far as drainage and so forth? Is this less of an impact or more manageable, more controlled?
Yes, so absolutely. So yes, we looked at the previous subdivision um, as Sam had indicated. Um, there was a, you know, obviously there was a a lot more infrastructure that was that was required for that. Um, not only underground utilities, but um, with respect to the stormwater question um, that that you're asking. Um, the the street or the proposed roadway off of West Hill Road associated with the subdivision had a drainage collection system that was directly connected um, into West Hill Road um, without any um, um, volume retention such as a, you know, stormwater basin. Whereas in our case, um, we're providing a stormwater basin to essentially reduce the peak flows um, their flow across the panhandle as we call it. So it it is significantly reduced.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Di.
So in addition to the lawn mowing, which is only going to be, like you said, up to four times a year, which is very often.
Mm-hmm.
So in the past, we have had another solar um, construction. And the the plantings, a lot of them died.
Mm-hmm.
And were like that for quite some time.
Yeah.
Those were more visible from the road. This, I'm understanding is probably not going to be, but is that something that still will be monitored?
Yeah, that's definitely something that will be monitored. And in fact, I've um, uh, gone through the Siding Council with a number of other projects that have um, had landscaping. And um, the Siding Council has actually asked us to provide a kind of landscaping maintenance plan. And it usually requires checking the trees every single year and replacing any that, you know, are dead or or whatnot. Um, so we we will be including that.
And I understand the tax revenue is obviously a plus for the town. But as far as the electricity that's being produced.
Mm-hmm.
What happens with that?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question. Um, so the electricity specifically from this project is going to the city of Hartford. Um, we have had discussions with Torrington over the years um, that which predated my time. Um, I think starting in twenty fifteen, the owners of my company had gone to Torrington and spoke with the mayor and um, offered to partner and um, on a number of our other projects. And we came back several times in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Um, Torrington wasn't interested. And then in twenty twenty-three, um, Torrington did a an RFP um, for for solar companies. And we didn't know about that, um, we didn't get reached out to. So at Torrington ended up going with a different company, Tri-Tech. Um, there's limited load and um, you know, so they generally cities can only go with one or two developers. Um, so unfortunately, twenty twenty-three was when we were starting this project. And because we missed out on the RFP, we had to assign it to Hartford.
And then what happens to, what what's the lifespan of these? Like they'll be there for how long?
Yeah, good question. Um, so initially twenty years is um, that's our like revenue contract with Eversource. And that's typically how long panels and all the equipment will um, last. Um, but there there's potential to kind of repower the system, replace the panels with, you know, more advanced technology. Um, and the site could potentially be up for another twenty years after that, so up to forty.
And then what what happened not to, not to wish this, but what happens if your company goes out?
Yeah.
Is that something that's transferable to another company? Like like for how, you know, how it is for house panels?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So um, you know, we're, we have secured financing and we're backed by banks. So if our company did go out of business, it would go into the bank and there's um, financial support to back it. Uh, it's also um, the entity that owns this project is going to be um, a subsidiary of Loadstar called LSC Serpents LLC, which just owns that solar project, um, not all of our other solar projects. So that kind of helps keep it financially separate.
And then after the twenty years or so, what happens when they're they're not working? Do you physically come back in and take everything out?
Yeah, at the end of the useful life, we'll decommission it, we'll take out all the panels, um, the equipment pads.
Everything comes out?
Fencing poles, um, all of that.
And you and you have to get a decommissioning plan approved as part of your approval.
Yes, we submit a decommissioning plan and we also post a decommissioning bond with the Siding Council.
It wouldn't just get rebuilt in twenty years?
Well, in twenty years, we could repower it and um, replace the panels and go another twenty years, or we could decide to just take it all down.
So you're saying your subsidiary is basically going to own and maintain this?
Mm-hmm.
How typical in your business does this get sold to another party somewhere down the line?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um, I mean, it it happens frequently in the solar development business. We are a small company and we like to own and operate the projects generally. So most likely, we will continue to own and operate this.
But if it is sold, basically all the requirements and so forth are just transferred?
Exactly, if it is sold, that entity, LSC Serpents, will be owned by the next company. And all the approvals and regulations will apply to them.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with the Siding Council's process in that regard. Do they do a formal transfer of of permitting or?
They really don't because the permit is filed under LSC Serpents LLC and that entity will be sold to a different company. So if anything, you're just changing the contact information.
Not to sound ignorant. Hartford is the recipient of this power.
Mm-hmm.
Define that. Because basically it goes out on the utility pole and it's out there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so essentially, um, the way community solar works is all the power and electrons from the facility are just spreading out generally into the grid. They're not going directly.
Right, exactly.
House, right?
Right.
Um, so the way it works with Eversource is we have off-takers. In this case, the off-taker being Hartford and like, say, like the Hartford High School. And they get electricity credits essentially. So they'll get ten percent off their electricity bills.
Gotcha.
Essentially how it works.
But for all intents and purposes, it's just out there on the grid.
Yeah.
They're just benefiting the savings because it's, it's supplying extra power to the grid.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Is that like, I mean, is that how it's going to be, ten percent? I mean, in in general, that's all that's going to, the city of Hartford?
It varies, but.
All or whatever will benefit just that small amount?
Yeah, it it varies, but around ten percent.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's all linked to what the usage of these facilities.
Right.
Is also, a ten percent of a building of this versus a manufacturing facility or a building that's twenty times the size of this is obviously different.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And and who has the say of that in in the town of Hartford? Of who's going to benefit from it?
Um, so it's all, i- it doesn't go to residents, it it has to be municipal accounts. So it would be like the high school or streetlights or something like that, all municipally owned.
Anyone else?
So. I I did have one quick question. Why would as part of the plan, um, understand the equipment on the last twenty years? See, you go twenty years at a time. Won't the equipment just get better and more efficient? As technology improves and manufacturers of these panels?
New stuff?
Yeah, so why wouldn't the plan be to just every twenty years, put the better panels in and keep going? Is there something about the rest of the structures?
Yeah, I mean.
Also roads or uh, that that part doesn't really make sense. It's a good idea now, why won't it be a good idea in?
Yeah.
Years or forty years, sixty years down the road?
Yeah.
Are there any places that have tested the, that have been there over the twenty years?
I mean, there aren't a ton of examples of projects of this size that have already been there twenty years since it is so new. Um, forty years seems to be the industry standard. I think we'll probably have improved technology, as you said, and we could go longer. Um, the main thing though is we need um, some uh, program, right? To be, to enter into with Eversource to actually sell the energy. And right now, um, we, we're in a a program called NRES, uh, Non-Residential Energy Solutions. And that goes for twenty years, we have a twenty-year contract. So we're hoping that they replace that program with a new one. Um, NRES was the replacement to the old um, virtual net metering program. So if that's the case, it could potentially go longer. But I think because there's only twenty years contracted, you know, developers don't want to go out much out past forty.
Thank you.
The efficiency of the panels drop to rage too, correct?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
They could be this big in twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
Starlier time, you got anything?
Just a quick question. So is it, it's after forty years, it's just because we just don't know? Is the reason why you're saying forty years?
Yeah, e- exactly. It it potentially could go much longer.
And and just saying that forty years is the uh, timeline for this, could the property be put back up for sale?
Yeah, certainly after it was um, completely decommissioned, um, yeah, it it could definitely be put up for sale.
Okay, that's all I got.
That that's a good question, just to follow up on Tom's question. Is there anything uh, that's left behind that would have to be treated in order to make the the land, for example, you know, habitable for? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, the rules are everything comes out.
Right, exactly, I mean.
The decommissioning plan, yeah.
Right, you're removing the poles, the panels, the equipment pad.
But it doesn't become a problem?
Good thing is, is that there's going to be the retention parts most likely still be all, you know, salvageable.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right.
And what do they do with all of those panels?
Most of it is recycled, um, about ninety percent of the material can be recycled.
Really?
Yeah.
What I had researched. Hmm, that's that's good.
Yeah.
So in in terms of our process, we uh, we're going to have, we're going to have further discussions once the application submitted about whether we want to give any feed, official feedback through, through uh, through this commission. Um, what what was your, uh, what is your revised timeframe, I guess you would call it?
Yeah, we plan to submit formally on March tenth.
Okay.
Um, but as I said, the Siding Council has six months to review it and and obviously submit comments and questions. And, you know, I'm always available if you have more questions.
Okay. So if in in, you know, the spring at some point, if we wanted to follow up with you, we could do a remote, we could have you in a remote meeting or?
Yeah, for sure.
Sam, thank you for the information this evening.
Yeah, no, thank you for having me, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, thank you, Mike.
Thank you as well.
All right, moving on to agenda item number seven, correspondence, a zoning and blight violation update. I believe everyone's got it in their uh, packet.
I'll just uh, update one quick thing. We've uh, had to start citations on um, nine ten East Main Street, which is Dos Amigos. Um, zone, there's multiple zoning violations there, some of them having to do with um, you know, uh, some vehicle sales that are going and repairs and sales that are going on off the property. But also, there was a site plan that was, that was um, issued back in twenty fourteen, fifteen that literally nothing's being followed for. The ADA, the ADA site's not compliant, um, sidewalks weren't built properly, lighting wasn't done properly, landscaping wasn't done properly.
Is that patio all conforming?
The patio is, the patio itself is conforming, but the ramp is not. So um, there there's multiple departments like with violations on the property. So we've gotten no response from any notices that I've sent. So um, so we've had to start citations on the property. That's the only thing new. Um, but the the good news is we're almost out of the woods with um, with batch Hebrew. We just have to complete the landscaping in the spring.
Is that the ten fifty East Main?
That's ten fifty East Main, yep.
I was wondering about that quick, can I ask you?
Yeah.
Question about that one? What do you do with all those citations? Is there, like, how does that operation make, pay all those past fines if?
So the site, the citations are are what they are. They go, they go on the land records. We have, we have a procedure for asking for partial waivers.
Okay.
Um, you know, we'll, we'll make sure the landowner, the property owner knows about that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that, I mean, that was the the major stuff um, that I had. But if anybody has any specific questions, you know, fire, fire them off to me either here or off, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I mean, that's mostly a blight, a blight issue, but there is a a property cleanup going on at uh, it's red, red, the Rosa property.
Oh, really?
Yeah, tomorrow. Red Oak, that's right.
Really?
I want to say Red Mountain, that's not right.
What, what, what are they doing after all these years?
Right, oh, they, so there was an agreement signed um, by Mr. Rosa after some convincing by a by a judge um, to allow the the city to go in and clean the exterior of the property. So anything that's in in blight violation is getting hauled out. Including the in-ground pool that's going to get filled in.
And who pays for that?
I'm just going to ask it.
So the, so yeah, it's whatever the cost for the city, it's going to be the, the um, street department guys are going to be the one. The um, street department guys are going to be the ones doing the work, and they're tracking their time and everything else, and it's going to, it's, there's already so many fines. And citations on that property, that's just going to get added to the, just going to get added into it. Um, so whatever their costs are will get added in. So. That is supposed to happen tomorrow.
That'll make some people happy?
Mm-hmm.
Alrighty.
All right, uh, moving on to agenda item number seven, B discussion POCD update.
Yeah, so we uh, we haven't had a comprehensive update to the POCD since uh 2009. We've done, we've done piecemeal updates over the years to keep pushing out our 10 year, our 10 year date. The last one we did. If everyone remembers was uh to adopt some language regarding the Affordable Housing Plan. Um, we did that probably a year and a half ago. Um, so that was the last amendment we did to it, but. Um, if you, if you kind of read through it now, there we're using, like for housing and some other stuff, we're using the 2000 census data. We're using housing data from like 2006. Um, some, a lot of other things are just kind of outdated overall in the plan. Um, so I put in, I put in a a budget item request for this year for uh. For for next year's budget for for uh to hire a consultant to to re rewrite the POCD. Um, so I I mean, I can keep, I'll keep everyone updated as that moves through the budget process to see if it stays, see if it stays in or not. But I've had conversations, you know, like preliminary conversations with the mayor. And and she's supportive in general of us doing the updates. It's just what the, what what we'll get out of the budget for it. So that would uh, that would put us, you know, putting out probably in RFQ in June or July. Um, we'd have to likely put together a working uh working committee, like a steering committee. Um, for that, which usually has at least a couple of POCD, you know, members on it, so. I will uh keep everybody up to date how it's moving along with the budget.
The presentation we had before from that guy, is that time included for our uh? Time that we have to put in as a commission?
Oh, continuing Ed, uh, I I hadn't, I hadn't really. Had really done that, but we probably could. It has has to do with uh, it's it's draining, right? It still, it still puts everybody short, though.
Speaking of that, the March 22nd, so we'll still get another link?
Yeah, did you put them up? It went through, so you may, you may wind up getting all the links, I'm not sure. Well, with the, so so each, we didn't, we didn't leave everybody's individual email with each application, right? Or with each, with each.
I had a phone call from somebody from there.
Yeah.
Because I think my name was listed somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, their contact information was on there, okay. Okay, all right, so so then everybody will probably get individual links, but I'll, but we'll make sure. Well, are you? Is any, anybody from our office actually going in? Because I'm not. Okay, yeah, yeah, so it's, it's this entire commission and one other member from from zoning board of appeals. That's that's what we have. So I opted out. Sorry.
It's on the 22nd.
Yeah, yeah, the 22nd.
Ready?
Yep.
All right, the time is 8:35, moving on, moving on to agenda item number eight, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Night, sir.
Good night.